United States of America, a considered republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. I am Judge Sisal. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of Texas, one state of the United States of America.
I would remind, uh...
...the ones sitting at the tables with high mics?
I think they are live mics and they are currently on, so just a word of caution. Wanted to share that with everyone. Thank you, Judge. And you will notice Commissioner Vaughn, absent this morning, he does plan on being present for the budget sessions. Item number one, approval of minutes. Approval of the minutes from the July 28, 2014 Potter County Commissioners Court meeting. Like to entertain a motion?
I move we approve the minutes as presented.
I have a motion from Commissioner Church and a second from Judge Ware. All those in favor show of hands. The opposed, motion carries four zero. Item number two, vouchers. To consider and act upon the approval of the payment of vouchers processed by the county Auditor's Office for the period of July 24, 2014 through August 6, 2014. Check numbers 157032 through 157308 and wire number 413 through 420. The amount of $2,179,981.21. Like to entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Commissioner Kelly and a second from Judge Ware for discussion. Like to open the floor for discussion from the court?
Page seventeen of thirty-five. Uh, check number fifteen seven two seven five. Precision Delta Corp. Is that, um, that's ammunition, is that right, Sheriff?
Yes.
And then on, um, page, um, twenty of thirty-five. Check fifteen seven three zero two. Tyler Technologies Disaster Recovery. Is that a... Okay, so it's a yearly... Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
I have a question. Page eleven of thirty-five. Check number one five seven one nine seven and the amount of $520. A wireless keyboard? Is that one keyboard that's 520? Okay. Okay. And ten. Thank you. And I have one final question. Page eighteen of thirty-five. Check number one five seven two eight six. There's several line items, specifically from the Sheriff's Department from Southwest Sales and Promotion. Appears marketing type of material. Is this an event that we were facilitating?
It's just the stuff we bought for our crime prevention through, for the year. We'll use it throughout the year.
For crime prevention throughout the years, ever?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. I have a motion on the table and a second. All those in favor of approval of the vouchers, please show of hands. The opposed, motion carries four zero. Item number three, insurance report. To recognize the insurance fund report. Ms. Holland?
There is nothing remarkable on the insurance fund report for today. There is just one thing that you'll notice. Uh, the second item there is, um, the first healthcare reform fee, um, that we've processed through our account, uh, with regards to fees that are specific to healthcare reform. Um, it's a, uh, $1,014 fee for the patient-centered outcomes and research institute fee, um, for last year's numbers, um, that we had to pay by July 31 of this year. Uh, but you'll want to note that Texas Association of Counties has agreed to pick up, um, both the Pecory and the transitionary fees for next year. So we won't see this fee next year. TAC will be picking that up.
Will that be, uh, rolled into our other healthcare fees though? We'll have to eventually pay it.
Um, the Pecory fee only runs for three years. Um, the fee we see here...
Right.
The one year that, uh, TAC has already approved, uh, to pay. And then we don't know about that third year, of course. Um, however, our healthcare, uh, ends up... The next year...
Sixty-two dollars a person? That's what they're gonna be paying?
No, this is, uh, the Pecory fee was $1 per life last year. Two dollars per life next year and then indexed on, um, health, national healthcare premium costs that third year. So we don't know what that third year will be yet. Um, the reinsurance fee and transitionary fee that you're talking about, the $63 fee, was picked up last year by TAC and, um, changes to $44 per person, um, this year. And that is also being picked up by TAC. So, so we're not experiencing that cost. It's rolled into our renewal.
Any other questions by the court? So, recognized. Item four, group insurance funding. To consider and act upon a recommendation to set group insurance funding levels for fiscal year fourteen, fifteen, and to include authority of county judge to sign necessary documents.
Um, the Insurance Advisory Committee met on August the fourth and I included some information in your packet, um, pursuant to that meeting. Um, I also have with me today, um, some information that just gives you a little bit better picture. And we'll just talk through this information. The, the forms that you see coming around now, um, are just a copy of the actual renewal so that you'll have that to review, along with the funding worksheet that helps us to determine exactly how much money we have to fund, um, in order, uh, to cover all the costs each year. And I thought it might, uh, clarify some of the information in, um, the recommendation, uh, and just support that information, give you a little more information, uh, to go by. But at any rate, the Insurance Advisory Committee met on the fourth and, um, our health insurance renewal, um, again, there was no cost increase for the administration fees as they were guaranteed for this year. However, we did experience, um, an increase in reinsurance rates and, um, expected medical claims as well as prescription claims, um, increased this year. You'll notice in that, uh, information that the prescription claims increased markedly, um, by almost 28% for this year. Uh, that's not, um, specific to just Potter County. Uh, that goes across the entire TAC book of business because prescription claims have just, the cost of prescriptions have skyrocketed, um, with the advent and, and, uh, increased utilization of specialty medications as well as compound, um, prescriptions. And we'll talk about that a little bit more. Uh, the compound prescriptions, uh, specifically have increased markedly. Consequently, TAC has, uh, initiated, um, a little bit of difference in the way that they are processing compound prescription, uh, prescriptions for this up and coming year. Um, any compounded prescription over $300 that processes through our plan will require prior authorization, um, just to, to review those prescriptions a little more closely. And compounded prescriptions will be limited to one prescription refill per 25 days on the prescription. So they're just, uh, reining those compounded prescriptions in just a little bit to try to mitigate that, um, skyrocketing expense there and monitor that. Um, this year, TAC, um, Blue Cross Blue Shield has also rolled out a Benefits Value Advisor. Um, participants can access that by calling the 800 number. And what that does is allow participants to call the 800 number and say, "My doctor is prescribed X." Maybe it's an MRI, um, of the lumbar. Maybe it's an, an MRI of the knee or some ultrasound or some specific procedure or surgical procedure. Um, the, uh, Blue Cross Blue Shield Advisor will then pull up the employee's specific information through their systems, access how much, uh, of their deductible needs to be met, and who the in-network providers are and what the costs are at each of those providers, and then provide a comparison for the employee to determine where they might go for those services and how much they can expect to be out of pocket for those particular services. Um, so they might be able to determine that it's more cost-effective to go to a freestanding clinic than to, um, the hospital, for example. Or maybe it will be vice versa. It's whatever that particular test is or procedure is and what those costs might be. It also will, um, not only will it save the participant money, but in turn, uh, it should save the plan money because, uh, participants can best, um, utilize the plan and get the, the best benefit for their dollar and the plan's dollar. The increase in, um, costs to the, the plan this year, funding levels, uh, the funding requirements for this year over last year went up by about $234,000. And so there, there was a, um, marked increase in the costs. The Insurance Advisory Committee, when we met on the fourth of August, um, we discussed several different ways to fund that, uh, those premiums or how to set the premiums in order to reach those funding levels. It is, it was the consensus of the committee to, um, approach that from a balanced standpoint and to pass part of that, uh, cost increase off to the county and part of the cost increase off to the employee, uh, in a pretty, um, balanced, uh, share, premium share. You'll see the, um, premium amounts listed on the handout. Um, the memo just shows what the premium levels would be to reach that funding. And if you look at that, uh, fiscal year fourteen, fifteen funding sheet that I handed out at the beginning of this meeting, the top of that funding sheet shows what the actual funding levels need to be, um, for each, uh, component of our renewal. In the boxes towards the bottom, the, the top, uh, box shows what the increases would be for each, um, level of premium to the employee. You'll also see that, um, there is a 7.5% increase to the county in order to fund, um, those premium levels or funding levels needed for this year. The increased premium share for employees translates to a 7.5% increase. So that would be 7.5 to the employee and 8% to the county for county-paid, um, premiums to, to meet that funding level. You'll notice, um, there's a box off to the right there that shows that that funding that we're trying to reach, um, covers both or all the health premiums or funding needed. There's also a notation there for the Potter County paid vision premium. The county currently pays, uh, $9.89 per employee per month for vision. And then the basic life insurance that's paid by the county. And then the total funding required to meet all of those requirements. So it's all of the insurance requirements for our group are included in that, uh, $4,752,000 funding level. The boxes just below that, I wanted to break out what the medical costs are specifically so that you can see where the actual premiums come from, um, that we have set for, uh, the health premiums. You have the same employee costs listed in that second set of boxes, but you'll notice that Potter County pays less in that second set of boxes. $690 per month as opposed to the 706. That's because it takes $690 of that 706 to fund only healthcare. The other $16 per employee per month goes to fund those other county-paid insurance benefits. I've broken it out more specifically this year because as we move towards 2018, we want to be, um, create a, a more clear trail of how much our health-only premiums are because the health-only premiums are those premiums and the costs that will be considered when we're looking at, um, are we required to pay that Cadillac tax that everybody's talking about that will, uh, be implemented in 2018? That, that Cadillac tax will be if our plan is too rich, if it costs too much money for employee-only, um, levels of coverage or employee-family coverage for health insurance, and that's both the county-paid and the employee-paid, then we will have to pay a 40% excise tax, um, for having a Cadillac plan. So we want to make sure that we stay below that, that maximum ceiling. And so I wanted to start breaking out the cost of, this is how much is for health-only. So we're not, um, it's not confused that we're paying more or that the cost of our health plan is more than it truly is. So I just wanted to create a, a clearer trail of how much of that funding is specific to our healthcare, um, there. But that, um, 7.5% to the, uh, to Potter County and 8% to the employee, um, and I believe I said that backwards just a moment ago, it's 7.5 to the county, 8% to the employee. That, um, cost will translate to between $5 per month for employee-only increase to the employee and $25 per month, uh, to the employee for employee-family coverage. That, of course, will be divided in half, um, to, to reach that semi-monthly rate that'll actually come out of the check. But it was the consensus of the Insurance Advisory Committee to share, uh, that increase as we have done in the past. However, um, it is also the consensus of the Insurance Advisory Committee that as we move forward, um, we consider some alternative premium share, um, possibilities, potentially some tiers to increase premiums with, um, more, um, as more dependents come on the plan. In other words, that, uh, uh, an employee who covers one dependent or two dependents may pay less than an employee who covers six or seven dependents because the cost and utilization, um, levels are different. But that's something that we will consider later down the road, possibly with next year, and we'll look at that with, um, our bid and renewal for next year. Uh, but that we, um, begin to educate employees as to what those costs, uh, truly are and, uh, that we are considering or that that may be a possibility for up and coming years. The, um, premium share rates, as you can see on both the memo and the funding worksheet, um, show accounting premium share for health-only of $690. The employee-only premium share, um, would go to $63 per month. Um, that's a $5 increase per month over this year. Employee and child will go to $2, uh, $233. That's a 70, or, excuse me, a $17 increase per month. Employee spouse to $239. And, uh, that would be an $18 per month or a $9 per pay period increase. And employee and family, uh, to $337, which is an increase of $25 to the employee per month.
I have a couple of questions if I may, Kate?
Sure.
So from the claims, expected claims, I was surprised to see this type of increase. If I remember correctly, part of our, um, kind of vetting process of picking the carrier was we were expecting to take advantage of some of Blue Cross's claims management process, if you will, and I may not be calling it the correct term. The claims management process, and we were expecting to really have a reduction in the claims that were being processed. And either that is, I, I don't think reduction in terms of number of claims, but the dollar amount of those claims. Uh, is there any, any kind of follow-up from that?
Well, typically you'll see a 10% trending in claims, um, from year to year, um, regardless of who your, uh, provider is because the cost of medical claims typically trend at at least 10% a year, um, just because, uh, by virtue of technology and, and, um, added costs. Our medical claims went up by 5%. If you'll remember, um, back two years ago when we went with TAC, Blue Cross Blue Shield, there was in the neighborhood of, of, uh, $500,000 difference in expected claims between Blue Cross Blue Shield and TAC and other carriers across the board. And that was part of the draw to the TAC, Blue Cross Blue Shield. TAC has, um, managed claims, um, well within the parameters of what they expected at that time. So, um, I think in all fairness, their claims management has, um, stood the test and, um, has done well. Not to say that we've had a, a large reduction in claims, uh, over what they expected last year, uh, but they're, they've managed, which was well below what the other providers were, uh, expecting and projecting, uh, when we first went with TAC, Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Okay. Um, a second question is the Benefits Value Advisor that is spoke to in terms of managing the prescription benefits and in-network providers, et cetera. The 800 number that I guess TAC and Blue Cross is now, uh, kind of putting into the marketplace to help manage that. What are our marketing efforts in terms of Potter County so that our employees know that these services are now available?
Um, this particular benefit just now came out. We have just received our first flyers for that. We plan to, to put information out, um, in our open enrollment packets and to push through open enrollment and all of our correspondence, um, this year to promote that Benefits Advisor. And I've already begun to use, uh, the Benefits Value Advisor, um, for some calls that we've had come through Human Resource. The actual, there is actually a, a button, uh, an area on their website where you, the individual can go out and, and log in. But I would, uh, recommend that for most folks that they use the 800 number because, um, I have experienced that it's, that it's a little, um, confusing for laypersons to navigate all the different tests with and without contrast and, and all of the facility charges and, and physician charges. Um, so I think it's better to direct to the 800 number, but we've already begun to start, um, using that Benefits Value Advisor to, um, assist as we can, uh, employees navigate and get an idea of how much that cost savings might be.
A lot of times on those types of calls, the 800 number, you have a lot of, a lot of wait time. You experience a lot of wait time with them?
I hear, uh, uh, kind of a mixture there. We do have some folks that say they have, uh, that they do experience, uh, a significant wait time. Um, I have had, um, other folks say that they don't. I think, um, some folks who have had the least amount of wait time have called at, at times that are not as high volume.
David, David mentioned that like three o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
No wait time.
So, so there is some wait time. I have, I have, uh, heard employees indicate, uh, a wide variety of, of wait times. Um, although, you know, in, in all fairness, um, you know, if you're on the phone and on hold 10 minutes and you can save $200, $300 by, uh, finding a better way to go or a better place to go, uh, it, it's a 10 or 15-minute well spent. It, it's just another option that we have and another way that employees can find out, you know, "How much is it gonna cost me out of pocket?" I think that's one of the greatest things that, that the, uh, Benefits Value Advisor offers is because it applies that employee, that participant's, um, particular information to what that procedure might be. So if I've met none of my deductible, it will reflect that and it'll let me know how much I'm gonna have to pay out of pocket for that procedure. Um, the opposite side of that is if I don't know how much deductible I've met and maybe I've met $300 of it, it may be a, a great relief for me to know, "Oh gee, I don't have to meet, meet the full deductible in order to, to, uh, have that procedure done." So, uh, it offers a, a lot of information and, uh, is a tool to allow the participant and the employee, uh, to, to find out where the, the best place to go is for whatever that particular service is for them.
And Commissioner Kelly and Commissioner Church, you both sit on the advisory committee. Is there anything you'd like to share about the process and maybe the recommendation? Is there anything you'd like to share about the process and maybe the recommendation?
Well, we talked about a lot of things and, and a lot of different options. And it appears this is probably the, the most fair. I just want everyone to realize that last year the county's portion was 656, 30, if that, if I remember right. And that includes both the vision and the basic life, but this year it's going to be $706 a month. That's a $49.70 a month increase. Multiply that over the 445 insured, it's $265,398 increase in our budget. So as we work through our budget, we need to keep that in mind.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm pleased with both of them.
This looks like the best program we have.
I'm sorry?
This looks like the best program we have at the moment.
Yes.
I think we're, we're looking at maybe putting this out for bids next year.
Yes.
So right now this is probably the best way to go.
And I would, I would share that in terms of the healthcare industry, we've certainly seen some employers just pass that on 100% to the employees. So I would certainly echo Commissioner Church's comment. And, and so Carrie, just in terms of kind of thinking through the, the budget that we'll be completing this afternoon, this recommendation and these dollar amounts are already embedded into that budget, is that correct?
Yes, they are in the proposed budget that the judge has done.
Okay. All right. Is there any feedback from the employees in reference to cost share or anything you'd like the court to consider? Certainly want to make, make it open to everyone. This affects each one of you and your families. Hearing none? Like to entertain a motion?
I move that we accept the insurance committee's recommendation on the 2014-2015 insurance rates.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Church and a second from Commissioner Kelly. All those in favor, show of hands. Opposed, motion carries for zero. Item number five, Time Clock Plus, to hear report on Time Clock Plus and take any action necessary. Ms. Holland?
We are in, actually currently involved in the Stage Three implementation of our Time Clock Plus, which does consist of Elections, Tax, the Tax Office and Treasurer. You'll recall that, that Treasurer was moved to Stage Three. We do have all the backend information loaded as I indicated via telephone during the, for the last Commissioner's Court. At that time, we had some issues with building the department for Elections because Elections had come under, come across in the implementation as part of the county clerk's office. Elections has been separated off into their own department now, and we've got that part set up. We are looking into some questions that Elections has with comp time accumulation, and we're trying to determine for sure. We're in process of determining that the system is appropriately accumulating that comp time. And then we'll be ready to, to train Tax Office, Treasurer and Elections and bring them on. It is still our hope to get that tier on by the end of this month, barring any unforeseen But we are working through that implementation. This, as you all know, is a busy time of year, and so we're working it in as we can, but still hope to have all the training done and have those, the Stage Three implementation on the end of this month.
Okay. Any questions from the court? Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Item number six, Potter County Projects, to hear report on various Potter County projects and to take any action necessary. Mr. Head?
Good morning.
Good morning.
The report that I've given you, the items in bold are the changes from your last report that I'd given you verbally. First page, the County Courthouse Preservation, just to make you aware on the warranty claims regarding the millwork in the building. Restor Haas out of Lubbock had picked up the two wing sections of millwork in the Commissioner's Court. We received them late Friday evening. I'll go over and inspect them, and then we're going to go into your area, Julie, next. We'll be up there next Monday to start measuring your area. So hopefully this is a path to getting this portion of the project concluded on the warranties. The substantial completion, Dave, do you have anything on that?
No.
Anything on substantial?
No.
Okay. The third page, the Elevator Shif replacement project, we have completed it 100% on the 5th of this month. We did, we performed our TDLR inspections, everything passed. We are currently awaiting for the test equipment, our elevator contractor to bring in their equipment to do some additional tests before we return that back to the public. Hopefully that will take place within this week. The elevator modernization, we have received our projected cost. I'll present to you in budget. We are about 60% complete on the design. The hail damage project for the Santa Fe Building, item number one on the LED uplighting, hopefully tonight or tomorrow now we'll be down there working with the contractor to get the flame appearance put back on the building. Items two through five, we already have a revision, I just failed to put it in there. That work starts on August the 18th on items two through five. Then the next page is the hail damage non-emergency projects. Items one through seven, David Harder and I reviewed this with the contractor. We still have some discrepancies that need to be resolved, the cost, where we stand with our insurance company versus what the contractors are requesting for these projects. Then items eight through 18, of course, this is in, we have a meeting on that this coming Friday to discuss that, to see where we go with those items on all Fairgrounds property. Fire Station Three project, we've, the topographic survey is currently in the process. The ETJ plat has been received. We have presented it to the architect of Park Hill Smith and Cooper. Project timetable, I and Pat will have a meeting with Park Hill Smith and Cooper here in about a week. We kicked this project back off. We'll start from there and we're ready to go to design. The XL Energy Retro Commissioning Program, we brought in our agent, Travis Brown Consulting from Amarillo. He's went through and performed the inspection on our properties. In turn, he'll be presenting that information back to the welding company out of Houston, and we will await their report.
Mike, can I ask a quick question on Fire Station Three?
Yes.
In terms of timeline, do we know when we expect to kind of turn the dirt, if you will?
That's what we'll be figuring out here pretty soon, or we go to Lubbock to visit with them. We're going to, Pat and I talked about going to Lubbock to work with Park Hill Smith and Cooper. I was under the impression when we brought them on was going to be dealing with their local office, but we're dealing with the Lubbock office. So we're going to try to go down there to save as much money as we can, traveling back and forth too. But we'll hopefully be finding that out, and we'll let you all know. The District Courts Building Security Project, Carrie, I believe y'all still want to keep that within the budget presentation?
Yeah, we want to do it.
Okay. Just to let you know, the District Courts, this is where the tire slashing that happened over there. We do have all associated costs in on that project, and I built it within my budget presentation to present to y'all today for consideration. And that's it, unless you have any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Item number seven, Sheriff and Constable Fees, to consider an act upon approving the Sheriff and Constable Civil Process Fees for 2015, no increase. Sheriff?
For the last six years, we've tried to stay with whatever Rattle County buildings, they're not going up, and so we decided, please do this.
So I move that we approve the proposed fees for the sheriffs and constables.
I have a motion from Commissioner Church and a second from Judge Ware to approve the fees with no increase. Those in favor, show of hands. Opposed, motion carries for zero. Item number eight, Savins, I'm sure I'm saying that incorrectly, Sheriff, Maintenance Grant Contract, to consider an act upon the approval of statewide automated victim notification service grant contract with the Office of the Attorney General of Texas and to authorize Judge Ware to sign the service agreement, renewal notice and maintenance contract. Carrie?
This is just a grant that we've received since 2003 to keep our victim notification. We've had this since 2003, and it's our victim notification system. We do get a grant through the AG's office. It's just a pass-through with our third-party contract, I believe is APRIS. And this is just our annual renewal.
And I have a quick question if I may, Carrie. On the total maintenance amount due, is that an increase? If it's a, if it's a pass-through, I just want to make sure I'm understanding our responsibility from Potter County.
It's actually a decrease from last year, or the current year. I believe it was about $29,000 this year, but the grant covers that entire amount.
The grant covers the entire amount?
Yes, it does.
And I noticed on the second component of that, contract changes, it's referencing none. Because typically, you know, I would be asking to review the actual contract, but it's indicating no contract changes. That's correct.
I move that we approve the statewide automated victim notification service grant contract with the Office of the Attorney General of Texas and to authorize Judge Ware to sign.
I have a motion and a second on the table. I have a quick question if I may before we take a vote. In terms of the application of this grant, is this the notification where a victim that's a result of a crime, when someone is released from custody of some type, they're, they're notified they're now in the public? Is that correct? Am I understanding that correctly? Okay. All right. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, show of hands. Opposed, motion carries for zero. Item number nine, Local Option Liquor Election, Justice of the Peace Precinct Three, A, to review the petition submitted in support of a request for the legalization of beer and wine sales for off-premise consumption in Justice of the Peace Precinct Three and accept the petitions if valid. Item B, if the petitions are accepted, the, to order the proposition to be placed on the November 4th, 2014 ballot for voters in Precinct Three and take any other action necessary. Lynn?
Good morning. Yes. We received a petition, an application for a petition originally, and it was, we found it to meet the criteria. These are the names that are on it. It also was submitted with notice where it ran in the newspaper. So at that, at that point, we issued petitions to, for the potential voters to sign, and these are the petitions that were signed. We received them and went through and validated that there are 2,598 registered voters from JP Three that signed this petition. There were, there are a number of names on here that were from the wrong precinct or were not registered voters. So, and I brought these in case you guys wanted to actually look at the originals. We created a list that Julie has that we attached that has the names of all the, the ones that were valid on there. So basically, I think my job here is just to present that we are certifying that under the guidelines for a liquor option election, that the petitioners did meet the criteria for a liquor option election to potentially be ordered.
Commissioner Church, since this falls in Precinct Three, is there anything you'd like to open for discussion or any questions? I'd certainly take your lead on that.
This is, this is for beer and wine for off-premise consumption.
You have my personal opinion? No. It looks to me like the people have spoken, they'd like to add the election. So let's do it.
Or to be placed on the ballot. So the next step would be the order.
Do we need to have a motion to accept those as ballot?
We do. And so Dave, I'll, I'll be leaning on you for guidance in terms of the next action necessary for the court. The way I understand it, we certainly are waiting for the certification from the Elections Administrator that the signatures are valid, and the court would then accept that in the form of a motion. Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct, okay. I'd like to entertain a motion and open the floor for item A.
Second.
I have a motion from Judge Ware and a second from Commissioner Church. All those in favor, show of hands. Opposed, motion carries for zero.
Okay. Item B would be to order the liquor option election for the legalization of the sale of beer and wine for off-premise consumption. So this would be the order to place the measure on the ballot in Justice of the Peace Three for the November 4th election. And I believe you have the order in front of you. We attached one page from the petition, just, you know, just as a matter of record, and then submitted to the court the list of the names that were on that petition.
I move to approve item B. Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Kelly to approve the order for the proposition to be placed on the November 4th ballot and a second from Judge Ware. All those in favor, show of hands. Opposed, motion carries for zero.
Right, I'll take my hand again.
Item 10, Elections, to appoint precinct judges and alternate judges for a two-year term beginning September 1, 2014 and ending August 31, 2016.
Yes, these, the names that you have before you, and I think I put mine back in that box, the ones that you have before you were submitted by the, the chairmans of the Republican and the Democratic Parties here, and they, they are done, just like they were done in 2010, the last gubernatorial election, that if a precinct voted for the Republican, that, you know, the governor in this case, then the judge would be Republican at this time and the alternate would be a Democrat. When we have the election in November, if anything changes there, then, then that order would change. So right now, you know, you're seeing judge and alternate judge, but if anything should change in the precinct in their voting pattern or voting history, then those would just be flocked. You will see some gaps on there. We do have three or four calls out to some folks that may be on vacation or waiting for their approval, so there may be a late appointment coming. We ran into a small issue because, and you'll see a number of gaps with the Democratic Party because under the law, if people crossed party lines, and we had a number of judges that did cross party lines in March, and that made them ineligible to be the official appointee as a judge for the, for the two-year term. And now they can be an emergency appointment or a case-by-case appointment, but that, you know, that's why we are seeing some of the gaps there. There are some folks that have served in the past, and they'll be able to serve as an emergency appointment, but not on the official appointment.
And when will the timeline surface for the emergency appointment? What is that timeline?
We do that about 30 days before that we will be doing our emergency appointment of judges. Because in the meantime, we're going to try to go ahead and, and do late appointments and try to fill something for a two-year commitment.
So with the local races, I'm, I'm not too surprised to, to see the party switch, which I'm hearing really has impacted us with, with this process. Is that correct?
That is correct.
I have a question on Precinct 221, in terms of the location, the Community of Grace United, that's a new location, is that right?
That is a new location. There's actually three new locations that are on there. The last time, or in the past, we've been at Forest Hill. We received a number of complaints from the citizens because it was difficult for them to navigate if they were elderly. And so we kind of searched the neighborhood and Community of Grace. The only thing that is in Community of Grace right now is a Head Start program, and they have offered their facility for us. It's right off of Grand, very close to Forest Hill, and so we, we looked to them for relocation. Another new location- to them for relocation. Another new location, Olson Park Elementary requested that we look for an alternate location there because they feel like they're busting at the seams. And they, they were actually holding classes in their cafeteria where we were trying to vote. So, we, we have relocated that one to St. Paul United Methodist Church. It'll be in the, in the parlor there. And my third change.
Pleasant Valley.
Pleasant Valley.
Pleasant Valley. And we had a similar issue there. We have voters who said that if it's, if voting is going to be at Pleasant Valley Elementary, count them out, because it was just too difficult for them to navigate, even though they're quote "88 compliant." So, we have received great reviews after using Pleasant Valley. United Methodist Church is accessible. It's very convenient, very, it's right in the same area. So, that recommendation is being made.
And is there anything new that's going out to the voters in that precinct? I'm just saying, because one and two and three are affected, is there any type of special mail-out that's going out to just that section of the precinct? Because that will impact them, obviously, the most. Their location that they have known for X amount of years has now changed?
With all three of those, we're planning to do a postcard mailing specifically to those three neighborhoods that will just, you know, tell them, hey, your, your location is, has been changed.
I move that we appoint the precinct judges and alternate judges for a two-year term beginning September 1, 14, and ending August 31, 16. Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Church on the table and a second from Judge Ware. All those in favor, show of hands. Opposed, motion carries four zero. Item 11, Elections, Early Voting, to approve the order appointing election judges and alternate judges establishing hours of operation for early voting polling locations and establishing the maximum number of clerks for the November 4th, 2014 general election.
Yes. So for November, our early voting will start on October the 20th, and it will go through October the 31st. And just by law, we're supposed to have the main location and one branch location at each of the four precincts. One thing we're doing slightly different on this one is our branch early voting locations, we're expanding the hours. Again, we received input from the citizens saying that, I believe last time we were 12:30 to 5:00, and the criticism was that if you're a working person, it was very difficult to get in there to the branch locations to vote. So we are recommending hours of noon to 5:00 the first week, but noon to 7:00 the second week, so that they, you have the full lunch hour and you have after-work for two hours the second week in these branch locations.
I have a question on Precinct Two specifically. We've used the Potter County Extension Office, and if I remember right, I don't know if last year was the first year to do that, and that traffic was extremely light in that location.
It was. It was. However, we went, we started last year going to some of the neighborhood businesses and putting out just a little bit of information that there was a location there, and it picked up during the time. We did have several of our voters say, please don't move it, please build on it. So we are planning to do some publicity in the neighborhoods around each of the voting sites to try to direct people there. I mean, my goal is to get as many people to early vote as possible, because you have 12 days to early vote, or you have 12 hours on one day. So, you know, absolutely, we want to push people to early voting, and so we'll be doing some additional measures to encourage that.
Some of what we've heard through the state and really even fairly local to Amarillo is a significant movement in terms of number of voters when they move to a grocery store, which is kind of a non-traditional form of thinking of where you go vote, but is definitely where the foot traffic is. Is there any discussion of that in, I'm assuming not for this cycle, but in the future?
Well, yes. Now, the vote, the grocery stores, we actually made a field trip down to Lubbock, and they use grocery stores and they use, like Lowe's and Home Depot, but not for early voting, because most of those businesses are willing to open their doors for an election day. In fact, Home Depot loved it. They put it back in the store and everybody was voting and then picking up two or three things before they got to the cash register. And similarly, with some of the grocery stores, the problem, you know, for early voting is finding a place that will welcome you for two full weeks. So yes and no on those. Is yes, grocery stores are a great idea, but not likely, or they don't work particularly well for early voting.
And so, with the locations that we've just talked about for the November 4th ballot, that's definitely not, not the plan this cycle to have any of those locations, but is being discussed for a future?
Yes.
Is that fair to say?
Yes, that's fair to say.
And someone could go to any of those four.
Yes, any of the five, because we have Santa Fe Building as well in here. And this is considered open voting, and you can vote at any of those.
Very good.
Once.
I've heard about that.
Okay. Any questions from the court? I'd like to entertain a motion.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Kelly to approve the order appointing election judges and alternate judges and establishing the hours of operation in early voting places and establishing the maximum number of clerks for the November 4th, 2014 general election. And a second from Judge Ware. All those in favor, show of hands. Opposed, motion carries. Item 12. Are you getting tired yet? Elections, Early Voting, Ballot Board and Signature Verification Committee, Central Counting Station, to approve the order appointing EVBB Judge, Signature Verification Committee Judge, I'm sorry, Signature Verification Committee Judge, and establishing the maximum number of clerks for November 4th, 2014 general election, recognizing election officials assigned to the Central Counting Station for November 4th, 2014.
Yes. And we will start with the Early Voting Ballot Board. We are recommending the use of the same judge we've had in the past, which is PJ Lemmons. And, but one thing we want to do differently this year is we want to separate the Early Voting Ballot Board from a Signature Verification Committee. With the increase in the PACs mailing out early voting applications for ballot by mail, we, I think, I believe we ran approximately 1,300 of these ballots in the primary, and we're expecting that that will just go up for this one. And so, it is an immense task to look at everything that you have to look at on validating one of the paper ballots that comes in. So, what we want to do is we wanted to actually separate the two of them, to where we have someone who compares the signature on the application for the ballot by mail with the signature that's on the actual ballot, and make sure that those line up, because, you know, a lot of times we have to stop there. We may have to pull the voting records. So we still have the same number of folks serving, but we're going to make it a two-step process and bring our Signature Verification Committee in early. They're allowed to come in earlier to look, because they don't actually open up the carrier envelopes that would house the ballot. They're just checking this particular issue.
So the two you have referenced, for the Early Voting Ballot Board presiding judge, PJ Lemmons, and the Signature Verification Committee presiding judge is Roger Johnson.
That's correct.
Is that correct? And this is the first year that you're separating those duties?
First time it's been separated.
One person.
Okay.
Any questions from the court?
Just a personal opinion.
I'm sorry? A personal opinion? You're entitled to that, Commissioner.
I don't understand the need for all the early voting, or the ballots by mail, because they have so many opportunities to come and vote early. That's just my opinion. I think this just opens up more chance for, pinky pinky. Anyway.
I would add, Commissioner, there is one state, and I'll, I know if I say it, it will be incorrect, but there is one state that has a high vote, the highest really in the country in terms of voter turnout, and they only vote by mail. And I'll look at the break, because now it'll bother me all day that I can't remember which one it is, but it's definitely interesting. Is it Oregon?
It's Oregon. It's Oregon. But under the law, if a voter is 65 years or older or disabled, they are allowed to vote by mail.
Okay.
As long as they're voting, that'd be great.
I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'm through.
I have a motion from Judge Ware to approve the order appointing the Early Voting Ballot Board Judge, I'm sorry, Signature Verification Committee Judge, and establishing the maximum number of clerks for the November 4th, 2014 general election. Is that correct, Judge?
Yes. I'll second.
And a second from Commissioner Kelly. All those in favor, show of hands. Opposed, motion carries.
Okay. The second item on here is just mainly an acknowledgement of the Central Counting Station. I think these are names that are largely familiar. Managers, Kristi Binge, Presiding Judge Stephanie Menke. Alternate Judge, this will be a new position, because we have not had a separate designated for representing the Democratic Party. So Chander Hill is, has agreed to step up and do that, and Jana Miller and Lisa Hinahosa will be there working on her tabulations.
And in terms of the compensation, are these static? There are not any changes in this compensation structure?
There's no change here. This is all the same.
And this just requires recognition here, not requiring an actual motion?
That's it.
Okay. Questions?
I'm through.
So recognized. Item 13, Elections, Mobile Early Voting, to approve the order authorizing mobile early voting at Park Central, Vivins Village, Craig Methodist Retirement Community, and Canyon's Retirement Community, and establishing hours for the November 4th, 2014 general election.
This is something that has never been done in Potter County, but is, has been done in other counties our size. And what this is, is a mobile voting outreach. We do not have a fancy, like Bloodmobile has, that's going out, but our judges will go and set up in a different location each day, and they will tear down each day and bring the equipment in. And it is very common in the other locations for these to be set up in the retirement homes and retirement facilities. So we were, you know, thought we would see if this would be something to try out. And one of the reasons, Commissioner Church, for doing this is, would be to retrain our elderly population to show up to vote in person versus the ballot by mail, because of some of the concerns that you indeed have regarding the ballots by mail. We have spoken with these facilities and, you know, said, you know, if you guys approve it, would these particular facilities be interested? And they, they all stated they were highly interested in doing this. It is a liability to them every time they load up a busload of their voters for the risk of someone being injured, hurt. They all are also under the understanding that these are not private polling places. They must have them open to the public. Anyone else may walk in and vote in these locations on the days.
In any precinct, is that correct?
In any precincts. Again, this is open voting. They, now, in some of these locations, you'll have folks that still have their addresses listed as Randall County, so they would not be eligible. It'd just be for Potter County only. And they would, we'd be at each location two to three days. We're only talking about doing it Monday through Friday, not on the weekends, because this is, because this is an extra. We're not under the same requirements of the law that we are for the branch and the early voting.
This is very progressive, Melin.
Who will help these elderly people vote?
We, our judge and our alternate judge will be there to help. We're only going to set up two to three voting stations, so that we'll be able to handle it, you know, very well with, with our folks that will be there to help them. If...
The workers will not help.
Workers in the facilities would be allowed to help one person. Now, I, like, a daughter could help her mother and father, her grandparents, you know, as far as direct line. You could help more than one person if you were directly related to them. But you would not have...
This person still has to be able to sign, is that right?
Yes.
Sign their name?
Yes.
They can't be.
Sign. Well, they can do an X, or they can have someone who assists them with that, just with everything else. But what we won't have is one person from a facility assisting multiple people, you know, as a staff person. And even in that, each time that someone assists, they have to take an oath of office for each one. It's not like they can take an oath and it's good, it's just a blank check for the rest of the day. They'll have to do it for each time, even if they have to do one for mother, they'll have to do one for father.
Sheriff, do you have a question?
Yeah. Will this require one of our guys to go with you and set all this stuff up? Play back what we do at the end.
No. In terms of public awareness, because this is very progressive, and really, kind of, I would think, a nice win for Potter County, and really being mindful of the voter turnout, what are some of the things that we have planned?
Well, obviously, this is another good way to notify the media and get that story out there. Anytime we have something new, we will, you know, go directly to the media with it and get some of that out there. Other thing is, just we mentioned before, posters in the areas and the neighborhoods. Hopefully, we'll be doing some radio interviews as well to get the information out if we're, if we are indeed going to go down this path.
I know that there's folks there that should vote and need to vote, but there are also folks there that still think that Eisenhower is president.
They would be disappointed when he's not on the ballot. Yes, and, you know, we are called out frequently to the nursing homes and the retirement homes and all that to assist with the application for ballots by mail. And that is one of the questions we are asked, and unless a court has said that they're not of a mindset to be able to vote, then they still have their right to vote.
And I think, certainly correct me if I'm wrong, Melin, each of these locations, our retirement communities and housing communities, we're not talking about assisted living or we're having to really interpret a power of attorney or a guardianship. These are...
These are all retirement, and there's one located in each precinct.
Sure. And I think that's fair.
That's fair.
Any other questions or comments?
I know Vivins has a memory center.
They have a memory center?
Well, as does Park Central, so.
Like to entertain a motion?
I'd like a motion to approve.
I have a motion from Commissioner Kelly to approve the order authorizing mobile early voting at Park Central, Vivins Village, Craig Methodist, and Canyon's Retirement, and establishing the hours for November 4th general election. And a second from Judge Ware. All those in favor, show of hands. Opposed, motion carries four zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item 14, Elevator Maintenance Contract, to consider an act upon approving an amendment to the elevator maintenance contract with ThyssenKrupp, I know I'm going to say that incorrect. Mike, you'll correct. Elevator, and to rescind the cancellation letter issued May 28, 2014.
You authorized us in the last meeting of the May, the May Commissioners Court to author, to send a cancellation letter to ThyssenKrupp elevators. Since that time, we, it was a 90-day notice, and this contract would be invalid by the end of this month. I believe August 31st was the last day that that contract would be valid. They, they wanted to set up meetings with Mike and myself and the Maintenance Department to discuss options of not canceling that contract. And through that process, they've agreed to this amendment that I put in your packet to change the way they service our buildings with some more reporting, some more onsite time, a guaranteed onsite time of hours. There, I'll let Mike kind of talk about what they're going to do, but I, in my opinion, I, I think that they'll, if they can do what's in this amendment, it would be a good contract to go ahead and continue on.
That was one of the main issues that I brought this to the court to cancel the contract, was a lack of the preventive maintenance that they were to be performing on our elevators per contractual agreements. The cancellation notice definitely got their attention. As David mentioned, we sat down with them. What they'll initially going to be doing is they'll be bringing in a crew. They're going to do an audit of all three of our major buildings, go through, look at the elevators, look at the equipment, and then they will visit with my department and order, okay, this is what we're going to do. They're required to spend 120 hours per year. That's divided into quarters per building. Basically, that requirement right there, we put it in our bid that David was preparing to send out. It was mandatory that anybody that bid on this, that they put those man-hours back into it. That's something that's happened with the elevator contractors through the past. They get your service to win you over with their preventive maintenance programs. Very few of them do it anymore, but ThyssenKrupp's explained to us that they're going to go back to the old way, that people used to do that. And that was part of the good part about a service agreement. So they'll bring the crew in, they'll do an audit of the buildings, we'll sit down and go through everything. They will spend their time in here on, per each quarter. The dedication behind them will be, will be strictly the responsibility... The dedication behind them will be, will be strictly the responsibility of the supervisor that's over that group. He is to personally come in and walk with Nicari to do audits of every building on every quarter. So at least we've got their attention, they're willing to work with us, and I do recommend, you know, that we move forth with this.
And so, Mike, definitely a different conversation than in May. You feel confident that this vendor, and that this vendor will really come to the table? And I say that only because there's obviously discord if we're canceling and then we're coming back after the table and implementing a new service agreement.
Yes, I feel comfortable with that they'll do the work. The gentleman from Dallas that came in, we sat down and visited with, you know, a lot of times, these contractors or these companies, you know, they take it for granted, thinking county government, don't know what they're talking about. After sitting down, really visiting with us, giving them notice, hey, this is why we expect it, not, then we'll let them go if they cannot perform this right here, but we're giving them the opportunity to work with us. I hate to change contractors, and you had asked the question, why is the next contractor going to be any better? I cannot guarantee that it would. But this contractor's willing to work with us, and basically, no, it's been put on the table. If they don't, then they'll be let go.
And the hours in item 2A, they're committing to 10 hours per building per quarter?
Yes.
And then also a quarterly audit?
Yes.
And item C, those are elements that we've either never had before, or I don't remember hearing about them at the court level.
We had never had the mandatory hours in preventive maintenance because the contractors always perform the work. Times have changed. They, that's when they had two or three technicians within this area. They've downsized. They may have had one, or our closest technician may have been Midland, Texas. So now they have committed to this. We've got to get back to the basics. It's sort of like a new, a new home or new building. You build it, you got to start taking care of it from day one. This contractor was not doing it, but now, we believe they'll honestly do it.
I guess you'll keep us updated.
Yes, sir, I sure will.
And the term of this agreement, if the contract was scheduled to term at the end of August, if I followed you correctly, David, what will this look like?
Well, this, we have a year and a half left, basically. We signed a three-year agreement starting November 2012, I believe. So we have about a year and a half left on the contract if we, if we rescind that cancellation.
Okay.
Basically, what David and I did, we went back and was getting ready to put this out for bid. We converted back, I believe it was a 2005 bid that we'd actually established years ago. The current contract we have, ThyssenKrupp, their contract was a little different than what we used to put out for bids, so that's why we've asked for the modification to this contract.
I'd like to entertain a motion by the court. I have a motion from Judge Ware to approve an amendment to the elevator maintenance contract and to rescind the cancellation letter issued May 28, 2014. Is that correct, Judge? I have a second from Commissioner Kelly. All those in favor, show of hands. The opposed, motion carries four zero. Thank you. Item 15, Equipment Purchase. To consider an act upon purchasing a speed radar trailer from Decatur Electronics in the amount of $6,325 to be purchased from JAG grant funds.
This is just equipment that we've put in for our JAG grant, and so, because of the purchasing contracts or the guidelines, is something that we had to bring to you guys, but it'll be used in all over the county to put out on the roads. We already have one, and so we're going to get another one to kind of multiply our places that we have out there, and it'll slow people down. Hopefully, it's got, it's got a little more bells and whistles on it with lights and all that kind of when you're flashing when you go over the speed limit, so it's a little more noticeable than just showing up the speed.
And Sheriff, when these type of items get purchased under the grant, any type of maintenance or replacing of that inventory or anything like that, does that stay within the JAG funds, or does that hit your general operating accounts?
Just hits our, hits our general stuff. We've had, the last one we had, we had, gosh, I don't know, it's 10, 15 years, and finally wore out. So, I mean, they're, they're pretty sturdy. The one we have now, the wind has already blown over the solar panel, but popped right back up, and we were able to get it going and operational, so it didn't damage it or anything.
And this one will be used out in the county?
Yes, ma'am.
You wouldn't see any results on this, or do you have?
There's actually a way where we can track that on, yes, sir.
Seems they might want to put a camera on these things. In our first school zones, you know, when school starts?
We use them a lot, we use them a lot in our school zones once school starts. That's where we focus, but during the summertime and the off times, we put them out wherever we, wherever we have complaints on the traffic. We've got one on River Road right now, that just seems to be the racetrack north of town.
And Carrie, what's the balance in that JAG grant account?
They just received a new grant of $51,600 and some odd dollars.
This is just the first item.
I move we allow the purchase of a speed radar trailer from Decatur Electronics in the amount of $6,325 purchased from JAG grant funds.
I have a motion from Commissioner Church and a second from Judge Ware. All those in favor, show of hands. The opposed, motion carries four zero. Item 16, Equipment Repair. To consider an act upon approving the repair of Constable 1 vehicle in the amount of $1,800. Funds to be used from equipment repair and replace.
The constable's not here, but he approached me about a week and a half ago, and his engine is making a knocking sound, and he thinks there's a loss of power. I can't confirm that. So he doesn't have any money left in his vehicle maintenance account for this budget year, and so he's asking that we take that equipment repair and replace, that $1,800, to fix his truck.
And would that happen like that carrier, or would it be a budget transfer to his account?
It would need to be a budget transfer.
And what, what is the age of the vehicle that he's?
It's a 2009 Ford F-150.
And do we know where the vehicle? I'm not sure if it was a transfer from another department.
It was a patrol vehicle for the sheriff's office prior to that.
Any questions or comments from the court?
If he can get it fixed up for that and run a few more years, that'd be great.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion and to also include the budget transfer necessary for that. I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the repair of Constable Number 1 vehicle in the amount of $1,800 to include a budget transfer from the equipment repair and replace account to?
Constable 1 vehicle maintenance account.
Constable 1 vehicle maintenance account. Sir, a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Church. All those in favor, show of hands. The opposed? Your fourth? Four zero.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Item 17, Employment Items. To consider and act upon the following employment items. A, Roden Bridge, the transfer of Eddie Asparza from maintenance technician to shop, sign shop tech, effective August 16, 2014. Item B, Roden Bridge, the transfer of Mark Schuman from the sign shop tech to maintenance tech, effective August 16, 2014. Item C, Roden Bridge, the salary increase for Juan Cisnetos, equipment operator, effective August 16, 2014. I have a motion from Judge Ware to approve. I'll second for a quick discussion. I want to make sure I'm following these. It appears to be pay increases and salary shifts. Am I following that correctly?
Yes. We are moving budget from other positions to cover these increases on Asparza and Schuman.
So Carrie, just to make sure I'm following, you're moving budgeted dollar amounts in the salary component within Roden Bridge to offset these salary increases?
Correct.
In an open position, from an open position, is that?
I don't believe it was an open position. Where's Paul?
Roger.
Okay, on these salary increases, it's kind of like a step increase. The gentleman that was in the sign shop coming to me the other day and said he didn't, couldn't handle the responsibility of the sign shop, because it is a responsibility, they're responsible for keeping all the stop signs, all the speed limit signs and all that. So I moved him back in, in road position, and moved the new guy up to the sign shop, and that's where the step raises is. And Juan, he is, we tried to work two crews. He is the foreman of one of the crews. He is not the foreman, but he is the, I guess, the leader of the crew.
Was he having a salary decrease?
Pardon me?
Was he having a salary decrease, the guy that couldn't handle the sign shop?
Did his salary go down?
He wasn't, no, he wasn't up to his level anyway. He'd only been in there probably less than a year, and he just couldn't handle it. So he didn't get that increase. I'm going to give the increase to the gentleman that's in there now.
And so I obviously have concerns with this step increase, just because we do not have a formalized structure and part of what we're really discussing countywide, I wasn't aware of a step increase within Roden Bridge directly, and I certainly may have missed that, so that, I'll definitely own that piece, Roger, but we've consistently seen this of these salary amounts being moved here or there, and really, for my concern, is it starts to build these differences in pay. And as soon as I say that sentence, I just, I want to be very mindful that I'm never speaking of the people, because obviously, the people are worth more than what we will ever be able to compensate them for, more the positions and what that structure is like.
Well, but this money was put in my budget, and I feel that I should be responsible for it and decide where it goes.
And I think that will set the stage for budget conversations this afternoon, and I think that's very fair as well, Roger.
But this doesn't have nothing to do with next year's budget.
No, that's correct, but we do have, there were similar requests for budget this afternoon, and we'll, we'll dive into that, but that philosophy exists. There's a motion on the table from Judge Ware, and I have a second. All those in favor, show of hands. Any opposed? Are you for or against, Commissioner?
No, this is just not a good situation. You know, I feel obliged to vote, and I feel, I really don't want to vote either way on this thing, but, you know, I...
But this, I mean, this gentleman deserves this money because he has a, he has a heck of a responsibility out there. It keeps the county from getting sued, and it gives them some incentive.
You know, we have a lot of folks that are deserving of this county. I mean, there's no question, but we need to quit setting, setting a precedent on these kinds of things that are being presented.
Well, then the court needs to go in and set something. I mean, for now, I didn't think it was even set. Well, so what you're saying, you're turning this down?
I haven't decided to turn it down. I'm just, I'd like to get some more input on it. Just, just a difficult situation that you put us in, and that, that's what I'm trying to get at, because there are several other folks that have the same situation for their employees that would like to have them on a step situation.
And Commissioner, what I can add is, obviously, we'll proceed into budget discussions this afternoon, and we'll be in, in full court, we'll stay in session. Commissioner Vaughn, I would expect to be back at that time if you would like to wait for a full court. I think that would be appropriate to do so, and I'm looking at Dave for, for guidance to have a full court if we want to table that so that we can take that for a vote.
I would vote with five people here on this.
You would vote with five?
I would wait and vote under the circumstances, but part of that's because I think I know how Commissioner Vaughn's going to vote. I do think what I was looking for, I never can remember, I always have to look it up, Attorney General opinion, and Scott may be able to help me on abstention. Commissioner Kelly, are you abstaining, or are you voting yes or no?
I think for the time, I think I'd like to see us wait for Commissioner Vaughn.
Okay. My, my, the question I was turning over my own head is, and again, I always have to look it up, I can't remember how an abstention vote counts in this situation. If you're abstaining...
I'm not going to abstain. I'll vote against it, and then we'll take a, take a revote when Commissioner Vaughn's here, is that?
That's fine, that's fine. Whatever y'all choose to do.
Mike, only question is, can you, if we move into a work session, can we take a vote in work?
Oh, I still, that will still be part of the posted meeting, yes. You can come back this hour, that's a good question, but so...
So we'll stay, there, there was a motion on the floor by Commissioner, or I'm sorry, by Judge Ware, and I seconded the motion. We took a vote, it was two to two. So the motion has, has failed for lack of a majority, and we will take that vote again when Commissioner Vaughn joins us this afternoon. Is that fair? Did I state that appropriately, Dave?
Yes.
Okay. Item 18, Jail Report. To hear report on the Potter County Detention Center and to take any action necessary. The jail count I have is 478, 87 female, and there were none noted in children, so I'm assuming there's none.
True and correct.
Item number 19, Executive Session. Real property, Sixth Street property. To hold an executive session to deliberate the purchase, exchange, or value of the Sixth Street property where deliberation and open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the county in negotiations with a third person pursuant to 551.072, the Texas Government Code. And item B, to take any action necessary. Do we want to go ahead and break to executive session?
We can. The last executive session, you all wanted to wait till the full court was here, so that may be another appropriate thing to let Commissioner Vaughn be here.
If I remember correctly, there were three, and so we wanted to at least wait. I don't know what the court's opinion is, if you would like to at least break for executive session to get some movement, or if we feel we need to wait for Commissioner Vaughn. Lean on your guidance.
I'd like to see Commissioner Vaughn involved in the executive sessions.
Okay, so we will take item 17 and item 19 this afternoon. Item 20, Executive Session. Dave, I'm assuming we don't need this other executive session?
No.
Item 21, County Insurance Items. To consider and act upon any insurance claims, accidents, et cetera, against the county?
Nothing new to report.
Items? Item 22, Agenda Items. To receive agenda items for the next Commissioners' Court. Is anybody even thinking that far ahead two weeks from now? Item 23, County Budget. Fiscal year 2015 workshop. To receive and discuss the proposed budget for fiscal year 2014, 2015, and to receive comments and explanations from elected officials and department heads regarding their budget request. We are currently at 10:30. I estimated this court would probably last until about 11:00, and then we would take an early lunch and come back, because I'd imagine we would take the whole afternoon. I will certainly lean on direction of everybody's opinion to break an hour, give everybody an hour break to grab something, and we can come back at 11:30 and plan for the full afternoon. Any feedback?
Do we have a clue when Commissioner Vaughn will be here?
I would expect him back by 11:30, Commissioner.
I think we need to extend it to about 12:00, and then make sure that he's here.
Okay. So we will break until noon, and the budget hearing will take place here.
Workshop?
Workshop. Yep, budget work session. Thank you, Commissioner. All right. Thank you, everybody, for your time this morning. We'll see you shortly.